The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our individual legislative justice.
Thank you. This is our information items, our government's reading on policies and we have public comment?
We do, but it's on item five, so if you guys want to move up to item five because they're each individual, that's up to you who are making motion to do that or have them wait through all the policies.
I would think we would like to move up.
Move it up.
Item five.
All favor.
Hi.
Okay, good choice. Thank you.
Policies are good.
Just moving five.
All right, so we begin with board policy five, one, one, three, and that is.
Do you want to go comment first?
Oh, public comment on general public comment.
It's all for it's all.
Okay, great. We'll take public comment.
All right, so I've got speaker cards here, three speakers. The first one is Emily Rolfe. Emily, yeah, you can just stand up and maybe come behind member Perry, maybe we can hear you well.
Okay, talk into the middle.
Yes, perfect. Speak loudly.
Okay. Oh, no, it's okay. Thank you, though. Emily can project.
My dad has taught me anything is to be the soccer coach, right? Good to go. All right, good afternoon. I'm Emily Rolfe, mom of three students in the Laguna Beach School District. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Hope you're all having a wonderful summer and I want to express my gratitude for all you do for the L B U S D students and staff and our greater Laguna Beach community. I know you've been provided part of this letter, so I'm going to get through as much as I can. I'm here to ask you, Laguna Beach Children's School Board, to consider a comprehensive examination of our current board policies regarding the use of devices, specifically smartphones, on school campuses and transportation. As concerned parents, we urge the board to take a firm stance on the use and presence of smartphones across our school sites. We propose implementing a smartphone-free policy for grades K through eight with a zero tolerance approach to smartphone use at elementary and middle school sites. This policy is supported by over ninety percent of parents surveyed in our district. For the high school, we recommend a uniform policy requiring that cell phones be turned off and collected at the beginning of classes and during similarly engaged environments. We believe this will create a more focused and productive learning atmosphere at Laguna Beach High School. Furthermore, we request that the district provide necessary tools for students on campus to reduce dependence on personal smartphones. We ask the board to adopt a resolution encouraging stakeholders to refrain from providing smartphones to children until they reach ninth grade. This resolution should be communicated within our schools and the broader community to foster a culture that prioritizes education and personal development over screen time. Finally, we request a more robust digital citizenship and social emotional learning opportunities focusing on devices, screen time, social media, and responsible behavior. We aim to foster a cultural shift in our district to unburden our youth from the challenges posed by digital devices. The research is clear, smartphones are a major distraction on school campuses and have a detrimental impact on our children's learning and social lives. Study after study has proven this and forward-thinking school districts across the country are finally taking action to repeal the use of smartphones on campus during school day. The unanimous passing of A V three, two, one, six by the California Assembly Education Committee this past April demonstrates that in the coming years, this will become mandatory across our state. We want to help reverse the trend of skyrocketing anxiety and depression rates affecting our children. With smartphones put away for the school day, it allows our children to experience at least six hours of non-screen time, healthy brain activation without scrolling, gaming, texting, comparing, or worrying, and an environment ripe for learning, connecting, socializing, laughing, and living. An existence we all want for our children. There's some statements here I must get through for time. This past spring, we conducted the Laguna Beach Family Survey distributed through engaged stakeholders and P T A newsletters from both elementary and middle schools. Due to growing concerns about the significant harm caused by smart devices, excessive screen time, and social media on our youth, we aim to gauge community interest in improving our children's lives through comprehensive reform and thoughtful action in regard to smart devices and social media. The survey received two hundred and fifty responses with a clear majority expressing support for a more proactive.
I'm trying to continue with Sheila. Okay, I'll call you up. This is Eva. Eva, sorry, Eva.
That's okay.
I see you. I know you did. Okay, you have three minutes.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
The survey received two hundred and fifty responses with a clear majority expressing support for a more proactive approach regarding community and school district policies and regulations related to smartphone devices and social media. There's some graphs you guys received. Over ninety-one percent of parents were very likely or likely to support a cellphone ban during school hours. More specifically, over ninety percent of parents were very likely or likely to support more regimented rules and regulations for student phones at Thurston and L B U S. And nearly eighty-three percent of parents were very likely or likely to support a wait until ninth smartphone community collection. With stakeholder support, we aim to collaborate with the district to create a community that prioritizes protecting our children from the harms of smart devices. We hope to achieve this through board policy changes, community education, and parent pledges, incorporating digital safety and citizenship even further into the curriculum, reducing device dependency in our schools and with our children. We're asking today that L B U S D join the likes of districts across the country that have already taken action to ban cell phones on campuses, to provide our children with a distraction-free environment to help them develop their best selves. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have another topic card from Karen Perry.
Hi, everybody. I'm a rising sixth and eighth grader, was born here, been involved with P T as a chair and who's full power. And so thank you for your time. I know how much this is for all of you. I'm a part of this group and I very much support what's been proposed to you. I'm a little bit of an outlier here as a rising, with a rising eighth grader. I would like to see a district-wide cellphone ban at the high school as well. I just think something to consider. I've got an eighth grader who's learning how to adjust to know cell phones at school. We have staff at Thurston and elementary schools doing the same thing. I would like to see that at the high school level as well. I would like if L A Unified is proposing this and able to do it, I would like, because L B U S D is so incredible, offers so many opportunities, it's a nimble, small district. So it's like if L A Unified is doing this district-wide at all school sites, including high schools, I would like for L B U S D to consider that as well. If not for next year, you know, to see how this works for next year going forward, really district-wide and all school sites have this cellphone ban. This is something slightly different at the high school. I would love for L B U S D on the, to be on the right side of history and not the slow side of history in terms of getting in line with the state's passing legislation and other large districts like New York Public Schools and L A Unified, trying to do this across the districts and at all school sites. So I would love for parents to come back and say, gosh, that school board with all these members here and the staff and administrative staff superintendent, they did an incredible job of working towards better mental health for our kids and better campus-wide engagement by enacting this at all school sites district-wide in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. I would love for that to be part of your legacy. So thank you.
President Pecker said he's not seeing any other members of the public that wish to speak.
Jason, can we ask a question?
Can you ask a clarifying question for the speaker?
Of the survey?
You can ask a clarifying question.
I know I went through that because we had it, but I'm not remembering whether, did you have a place for people to make comments?
We did, and it was a very wide-ranging, so we didn't include it in this, but we do have feedback and we have extra data. We could go through it, I could go through it and set a time to meet with you guys and look through. It was not the most formal, so I think a lot of the comments were varying issues across all of the social media. You know, there was an aspect of social media to it, so a lot of different stuff.
I was just wanting to get like a sense of the feelings of people, you know, they might have been really, really strongly supportive or they might have been sort of little round or there might have been another issue with, you know, being able to reach your student. I was just curious what the range would be.
I would say casually, I mean, the survey results that we shared with you were primary, it was all for this, let's go. There were a handful of like absolutely not sub force, right? But I was surprised, pleasantly surprised that it was more overwhelmingly positive, especially with the wait till ninth. And then we also looked at wait till sixteen for social media, but this is more about cellphone policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming. Thank you for providing us that information.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we should, we'll stay with the five thousands and we have board policy five, one, one, three, up for revision, revised per C S B A update, absences and excuses. So we've done, we've got policy, worktops, it's basically, we can recommend bringing it back for first reading. Changes are highlighted. So we'd ask, does anybody has any concerns or questions on what's highlighted?
Mark, excused absences, like a doctor's appointment, sick, seven family. What's the code for what's excused?
For bereavement?
No, for absences, because the key change is when a student's absence from school is excused, the teachers, you know, let's them make up the work.
It's all on the list.
It's a long list. Just give me a brief digest.
Brief digest, the illness, doctor's appointment, jury duty, if they're going to go and protest, mental health day.
Mental health days.
Cultural or religious observance.
Death in the family.
Death in the house. If you have to go to court, not for jury duty.
The update here, the update here was related to the work one in the second paragraph. They'll clarify that piece.
Identical or reasonably equivalent segments and test.
So you say the major thing was the work in there.
As far as excuse absence, they were clarifying the add of the work and entertainment industry or L A as permitted by Edco. And then, and then the second piece is clarifying a little piece around what you should require to provide a little more, but it's excused.
And so I think more importantly, it's what's not excused. So there's verified, verified unexcused absences, which would be a family trip. So sort of things, they're verified, but by state law, they're not considered an excused absence.
And what if there's no response? There's no.
Then it's unexcused.
Unexcused.
Cut, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? So bring this up for first review, please. We don't need to vote on each of those, just consensus.
Contensus.
Okay, thank you. Board policy five, one, three, one, point eight, discussion on mobile communication devices.
So I have a couple of questions about it because this is going to be tough to tackle. One is, are there state laws around this that will impact the way that we consider changing it? For, you know, for example, what disciplinary factors are we even allowed to use in the event that people have cell phones there? What are the responses? The second question, which I should have asked while everyone was here, but when I look at the charts and ninety percent says they're very likely, you know, they would like to see a ban on cell phones, I think it would be interesting to see a breakdown between people at the elementary level who want to see a ban, people who at the middle school.
Should have asked that, correct.
I know, I was going to, because I read it and thought, how many of these are elementary and because I think, yeah, I think that may impact it. And the third part of it is, you know, we can't actually ban what parents allow. We can only set policies, you know, for how we want to handle this school, so.
Based on the discussion we had earlier, that I was, for me, I would not be wanting to bring this forward as a first reading because I think we need to look at how we're going to bring the item that we talked about as, which would then be incorporated into a policy and also perhaps a resolution or something to communicate to stakeholders.
It's not a resolution yet, so we.
So we need to have an agenda item that we can, so we can bring in a larger, yeah, contingent that would want to call it.
Like we're going to be totally particular like for the school student representative representative here, I think that they should have a voice.
Me in September, Jason, or?
Yeah, but I think there's, we can answer some simple questions. First, the Joan's first question, which was, what's the law? So the law is specific to forty-eight, nine, oh, one dot seven, which essentially is what you see in our policy, which is that a student can have a phone, should be turned off during instructional time, but they'll, you can't prohibit them from possessing or using it under the following circumstances. And so that, right there, one, two, three, four, that's law. Right, that's it.
We just got past, what bill just got passed?
Nothing. They didn't pass it, it's passed, so they said it was a pass out of assembly. It did pass out of assembly. It's sitting right now, waiting for further pickup. It should be heard end of next week.
Or dies.
Or dies. It could be a two-year bill, I don't know. I would expect it's going to move because the governor said is taking a stance on this, so I expect it's moving. There aren't, there, that's just one of three bills that were kind of floating out there. I expect they're going to culminate around one and move it, like it's going to move forward one way or the other. But I don't know how much of a change they're going to make to that language. I don't know if you're hearing anything, but I don't, I don't think they're going to change the language much because they're going to have to allow students with I E Ps. If for some reason it's written in an I E P.
Well, they say health.
They're gonna, you know, if it's part of their I E P, they're going to have to have it, right? If a doctor says you have to have a phone, they're going to have to be able to have a phone.
I don't mean to sound thick, but for what reason would you need a phone for an I E P if you have a computer?
Diabetes tracking.
If you're diabetic.
Okay.
You know, if you're diabetic, you don't have a phone because everything's digital now, you're tracking.
But that's, that's a doctor's note, but that's, but an I E P is different.
So it would be an I E P if the student, you know, bought by their special services, which a lot of.
Could be an accessibility, something that would be universal.
Yeah, yeah.
But like was very specific.
Maybe we're hearing email, like every, like a lot of things actually have, based on conversation.
Conversation. What we're talking about.
I think we're not yet, like if there's the big picture and then there's these little niche cases.
Our policy doesn't address anything that has to do with, like it says, turn it off during instructional time. We were talking, if we're talking K twelve, I would think that when we revise a policy, we're going to end up breaking it down into, you know, the K eight level or nine, twelve levels.
You can have a policy that says it's not to be on during instructional time, period. I mean, I think there's, there's a difference between banning the phones and taking, and making a statement that says in K eight, you know, philosophically, the board believes that students shouldn't have cell phones, period. And that, you know, nine through twelve, the policy is, we understand that kids are going to have phones because they're driving, but that we don't expect them to be seen or hurt.
Yeah, so.
There's lots of other things too, though, that are like, think about all the app-based things, like kids are expected to sign up for Flex tutorial every night on their phone. I haven't seen a web-based, like there are things that we were doing as a district that are reliant on phone-based technology. And in the early ages, you're like, wow, you don't have a phone, you're the odd one. But we, over the last few years, have added even more things than have kids relying on their, their phone. So I think there's a much more comprehensive inventory as a district of how we're relying on devices at home and in the classroom.
So we need that information.
And then there's more data that is, needs to be shared with us in terms of doing some, some analysis at, at breaks, instructional breaks, or recess and passing breaks, of how much kids are actually on their phones, either in a phone zone or at the high school level, are they on their phones or they not? Like, I haven't done a campus walk to actually analyze that or heard data from principals that say it's a problem. So we need all that data. We need parent input, we need student input, we need administrator input, we need instructional services input. And then you could, you could like Newport Mesa changed the policy and you read it, it's no different than what we already have in practice.
It's enforcement, it's not.
They're just making a big mistake that they have to policy and it's no different than what's already happening today on our campuses, so.
So I was in New York when they, when Bloomberg banned phones in schools, all K twelve, and all my kids were in school at the time, and parents went ballistic because for similar reasons to what would make parents crazy here, just truth be told, I would prefer that there be no phones at school, but I don't think we can prevent kids from carrying phones with them, which is what the district wanted to do in New York. Kids make plans that way. A lot of them take the local home, they have things to do after school, so some parents will not be comfortable with their kid not having a phone. But, and we can't tell parents that, but we can make recommendations that it's best that your kid not have a phone and have access to social media. And I think we can do more in the schools if we want to enforce not having phones during the day, including at lunch and break, then I think we need to think about how we're forcing kids to have their phones at school during the day, right?
Yes, like take out your phone and take a picture of your science experiment and submit it to get credit because it's due. We do that all the time.
Right, and then.
Not use your laptop to put it around, that's the only way you're permitted.
Which again, is permitted under our policy.
Correct, but like do we, like what exactly is that change?
I'm sorry. I was just going to say it makes kids feel, like my kid doesn't have a phone and he's in seventh grade, and it makes kids feel like they should have a phone. Like I'm the outlier because I need it for X, Y. There's a hundred justifications for why.
I'd say high school, yes. Middle school, you don't see it as much because there's just a spam, right? Because there's a lot of folks, they won't give their kids phones until seventh or eighth grade, and there's this pride even that they exist, right? But nine through twelve, the expectation is really to have their phone. That being said, we have other ways, but I mean, every one of our Chromebooks turns and takes pictures and all those separate pieces. But to, but there's also a component, at nine through twelve, they, we need to teach some responsibility around it. It's not something that we use as a tool in nine through twelve, other than maybe to do, like if you want to take your phone out, take a picture of this, I'm going to go ahead. Like, because some kids, that's how they organize themselves. But we're not using it as a teaching tool. Like, it's not something where we say, everyone take your phones out right now and you're going to do X, Y, and Z with your phones. Like, that is gone by the wayside. That was early on when we had the clickers from the clicker response systems, like you could use your phone to do that instead. But that's where we had one-on-one, when we went one-to-one and we have these Chromebooks that can do all these things that now phone, I mean, our Chromebooks, their screen turns around, it does all sorts of things. It didn't do that before, but the, now we have that capability. I don't find, because most often enough, the teachers are having them put it in their sleeve in front of the classroom. So it's not being used in English class, it's not being used in social studies classes. It's a hindrance, that's why the teachers are collecting them, right?
Are they doing that at middle school?
Middle school, no, because we don't expect them to have them.
So we don't have a policy like, but they do.
But they do have them and they pull them out in unprotected times. Or in some cases, we have teachers that are allowing them to use them to listen to music, and that's where we want to say, that's where I'd like to be able to say to the staff, we are enforcing the policy that the expectations of students don't have phones on, on campus, period, in K three, whatever it might be, which means then, we're not collecting them, but we're also not allowing them to use them. If you have a phone, you can listen to music, that has to stop.
So Jason, you're just saying then, if we're going to, we say that, K eight, they shouldn't have a hall at school, would we have to put that in policy? Okay, so then, that's just my concern with working on this policy now. I don't think we're ready.
No, we just need to know kind of some general stuff. We didn't even give you examples because I wanted to know what, like, this is the first time we're talking, we've heard from some, from some folks. You know, we could do a broader survey, you know, there's some, they had a survey that they did, their survey, I can tell you, I know, was predominantly elementary with some middle school, very, no one from high school really answered, so they have no high school valid data. But they're, they do have, I would say, you know, a good number of folks who are involved parents, because they're, they use it through kind of their, the listserv that they had access to. But again, I think it's more of a philosophical thing right now, like where, where does the board want us to look? And you gave us some direction and we're perfectly capable of kind of talking to the high school, middle school in particular, we know elementary's not asking kids to pull phones out, finding out, okay, how are they being used now to the extent in an instructional setting? I would argue, majority of our teachers are going to tell you, or us, that they don't, they don't want them in the classroom, they are bothersome, but recognizing nine through twelve, there's really no way for us now. I, I would not philosophically be able to support a ban on kids being able to access their phones nine through twelve, knowing that at lunchtime, my, if a child's going to be driving off campus to go somewhere, that the parent connects with that, like that just, we need to teach them appropriate use and that's, and the parents too, so there's a parent component to it. So I think we can build out some things in the policy. I think that's why L A Unified kind of bought themselves time, like they bought themselves six months, because they're talking January. They're also, we're also waiting to see what the government does, you know, and so I think we, we'll see what they do maybe next week and what the governor ends up signing and we can bring back some things in September for a potential discussion. But if there's something that really stands out to you that we really need to capture that, you know, in this discussion, if you're thinking about it, please let me know because we'll, we'll keep kind of building it out.
Well, the other question is, aside from what we do in the classroom, how do we want to tackle it as an agenda item in terms of, you know, just the board want to make a recommendation about cell phones for kids? Like, do we want to say that we recommend parents wait or teach their children about cellphone usage or teach their children that it doesn't want to prolong out during the day? Like, I don't, you know, I don't want to, I don't know what we want to do.
That would be great to know right now if there's a philosophical stance that the majority agree with, because then as we draft some things, we could draft some things with that in mind, right?
I mean, my sense is that.
If you don't have that yet, it's okay.
I don't know if all parents, I mean, a lot of parents understand and they're very, but some parents believe, probably rightly so, that they have very responsible kids and they don't mind them having phones and they're making a parental decision that's really none of our business. Like, there's nothing, you know, but is there, based on data, a recommendation we want to make about waiting as long as possible to have your kid have access to social media, for example? Or is there parent and student education around appropriate cellphone use or, I just feel like the district could be doing a lot more now that these exist to sort of address the problems of social media and cellphone use, but I don't know what to do with that.
You could at least reiterate what the legal limit, like what the legal ages are to, for social media and, you know, like.
Thirteen.
Yeah, so there's, there's that piece of it, right? Reiterating what, what those laws are, guidelines, whatever.
Right. So a recommendation, though, is different than an actual policy.
Right.
And if we have an actual policy, then I, I think we have to follow through with it. Administration has to follow through.
Right, I mean, that's the key, is that we're not afraid to enforce something, we just need to be able to back it in what the board's policy is, right? The board says, this is the expectation, our job is to have administrative regulation that says, this is what we're going to do about it, right? So, right now, the policy exists, you know, where we could, there's four reasons that can, phone can be out, right? That's part of the law, it is what it is.
So if you're looking at a, a shared philosophy among board members, then are we needing to have that philosophy reflect the stakeholders or is it just our personal opinion? Because those are two different things.
Or the early governance folks. I said, you actually elected folks, that's really your decision to make, right?
But right now, I don't have enough broad-based information to know if they would share my opinion.
Well, that's what they were trying to share, that's why they were trying to share with you.
We have that data, you're going to get plenty of people, and this is where the student voice is significantly absent.
There were some really interesting.
We need our student board members to weigh in on that.
Interesting student comments in L A.
They went.
There were interesting student comments in L A.
Yeah, because we, you know, we just don't, they were following us.
It was huge in New York.
Yeah, so. And I, and it has been here, if you go back to early years of the same way, I mean, parents were, the fact that they wouldn't be able to reach their student in school was, seemed to be the overwhelming panic. And so that, and that was early years, I can't say how many years ago it was, but I just know that it was early on and it was certainly before smartphones. I mean, it was before there was, it was just, and then we had to try to educate parents, if you need to contact your student, at least find out what the school schedule is so that you're not calling them in the middle of third period.
Right, I, I feel like through the Parent Resource Center and through education programs in the schools, we could be doing a lot more, be sharing research with parents, I, I think letting parents know what kids are capable of on a phone, letting them know that it is not actually possible to track everything your kid's doing on the phone because there are apps that prevent that. Some people don't know that.
People are very little.
That, reminding them of the social media.
We do some of that. We bring in cyber cop to get you to elementary school, it's not who shows up. I mean, we, we do a ton of education on cell phones and what's out there and those different pieces, but to your original point, Joan, there are parents who say, well, I'm not concerned about that because my, I'm, my kid's responsible and so on and so forth, They don't attend. So we get like really limited attendance to some of these things. But administratively speaking, we, we have a policy. We, we enforce it. Uh, but I, I'd like to be able to have more teeth to it in some ways to say, if the board philosophically believes students shouldn't have phones, that's absent the policy. But the board has every right to add something, a philosophical statement to the policy. So this is what we believe, right?
And if I, if I went to the other side, I would say that if, if it's distracting in the classroom and if it's affecting students' mental health, then I'm not gonna care what the stakeholders say. I'm gonna say that I'm aware of that and that's the bigger issue. So, because that's what I, that's, that is the bigger issue. That's the bigger issue to me.
Yeah, I agree with you.
It's classroom distraction, but also it's the mental health. And I, you know, I, I see it with students that are out of our school system. I mean, I see it with older students that they are, their lives are affected by this constant comparison. And then with Orange, it's just what you said, with Orange County, they're thinking, man, oh, I can never live here because it's, you know, they've been priced out of, out of the area. And so they are suffering. The anxiety levels, and that's, I'm talking, you know, college and beyond. So, yeah, it's.
I was at the statewide conference in December. That I went to one of, one of the presentations and it was the Beverly Hills School District. And it was an example of governance, an example of what the board wanted and what the administration wanted. And the board of Beverly Hills all wanted to get rid of all cell phones. And the superintendent didn't want anything to do with that because he had to enforce it. But it was, it was just an interesting thing to think about. I totally, I totally believe that we should be supporting not having cell phones on campus K through eight and that we fully support the administration setting that expectations. We won't have to have some type of, um, ex, you know, some, some types of things for health or what the state law says, but I think that that's one place that we can start, that we support the administration not having phones K through eight. We can also say that we support the ongoing work. Our high school is already doing around cell phones in the classroom, which is superior. It's better than, I think, anyone around. And then the last thing, what is that? We are, uh, we support our ongoing digital citizenship or we're proud of our low rates of cyber issues based on survey data. But I think those are three places that we can start. Again, I think it's easy for us to come up with this policy, but these folks have to.
You're talking philosophy, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's another part of it, which is this pledge. A lot of parents believe in this wait till late pledge where you pledge that you're not gonna let your kid have a cellphone until they're in eighth grade. And it's, it's non-binding. I don't know that the school can take that out.
Could, could that be something the PTA or the parents could take on?
Is this similar to Oprah's pledge? You won't use the cellphone in your car?
What?
Do you remember Oprah's, Oprah's pledge? You can't use a cellphone in your car. And she was having everyone around the country pledging that we're not gonna use cellphones. That didn't work. Same with drugs. But I think what we could do is what the city's doing about that wonderful PR thing about being respectful of our beaches. You know, uh, and, and joking, but I, I, I think that any parent could come up with something that would cover what you're talking about, Joan, as far as education, which should be very simple.
Yeah, I think we should do, I think we should do a lot more information sharing and maybe the PTA can take on like a fight against.
Or, or school to school.
What I wanna do, Jim, is have something that doesn't, I mean, for me right now, the city is sounding childish. And, you know, we need to provide information, but this, you know, the idea that we, no, I, I.
Can I ask a question? Sorry.
So students are permitted during non-instructional time to have their phone out, right? If they're passing period or lunch, there's. High school, there's no, at high school, there's no cellphone zone. If they need to call mom, schedule the flex, they call their phone out.
Correct.
Okay. And at middle school, we have a, we're back to cellphone zone. So you're not allowed to pull out during non-instructional course. During instructional time, it's very clear, you only take it out if asked.
Yes.
But during non-instructional time, there's a zone you go to use it.
There's supposed to be, yes.
Okay? And then if a student is caught outside of the zone, what's happening currently? What is the, how is Joe?
They take the phone and then they get it at the end of the day.
So they take the phone, go to the office and they come in after school and pick it up.
And what if that happens a second and a third time?
They take the phone, the kid comes in. If it is really bad, they'll contact, you know, loop the parent in, obviously, if it's like habitual. So however, like you, you, you're probably familiar with forty-eight, nine-hundred K defiance. You can't suspend a student for defiance K through twelve now. So I've been getting a lot of calls of situations like this where the only thing you can really plug it into is defiance of school rules. And so even with repeat offender suspension is not an option. So that's why I think Jason says take it at the end of the day.
Yeah.
There's gonna be ramped up, uh, other means of correction.
They, they are allowed to do like Saturday school. They're allowed to talk to parents about it, just not suspend.
Yeah. Yeah, you can, you could assign a student, so we don't have a permission of going to Saturday school here.
Oh, I, I just saw that as an example.
Yeah, and you can give detentions, you could give, like confiscation of the phone in and of itself is like for the kids who are constantly on it is a pretty big penalty, right? Um, again, if, if staff were given some expectation from the board that we up our enforcement policies around this, then that gives staff a place to go, right? And that's, that would be my ask, I mean, to, to the point around, you know, to Jim's point on Beverly Hills, like, we're happy to touch it and deal with it. If that's what you want us to do, we want you to be the ones to set this expectation on standard. Because then if you don't change it and you're not showing that this is really important to the board, um, then it, it really kind of looks like it's being left to decide administration to be the ones who are picking this charge up and running with it. And I think there's an opportunity for the board to take a stand on this. That's what the community is asking you to do. They're asking you guys to take a stand on a philosophical side of things, recognizing, they're very well aware that the law says kids can take their phone to school. Like they're not, they, they know that. That right now, the law says they can take their phone to school in their pocket. But what they wanna be able to do is normalize that most kids don't have phones. Like we do in our, you know, with drinking, we try to talk about over fifty-plus percent or sixty percent of families aren't gonna give their kid a phone until eighth grade or ninth grade, whatever it is that they're gonna do. That's the PR piece that you can push out because that's where people are gonna say, no, son, not everyone has a phone because I know, I got this thing from this, from the PTA and it says eighty percent of PTA parents are saying they're not giving their kid a phone till this time. That's, that's the PR side that will help the families tell the kid no. Because ultimately, the student's not going to buy the phone themselves, right? Mom and dad are the ones doing it.
Grandmas are doing it.
So.
Is there, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Is there any interest from the board or from staff or administration on the phone pouches? It hasn't come up, but that's more tech to solve our tech issue.
My view on that is if the board wants us to take five to ten minutes of instructional time every day over a hundred and eighty days to do that, recognize you're gonna lose five to ten minutes of instructional time every day to do that.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Is that something that, that's so important? I think it.
That wasn't what the parents were asking, it was just.
But everybody knows that and you have an answer.
I would say no phones K through eight. Yeah. We wanna say no phones K through eight. How do we run up against the fact of them? On the other hand, I also feel that we can't say that they can't help one.
Well, but that's the question of what's the, what's the law change going to potentially be?
Right.
And are we gonna be given some more authority to?
Can we take that authority now though?
Not yet.
It's just a philosophy now.
I think you're kinda gonna wait some a little bit, but.
So we can ask that and we can't enforce it.
I, I think that one problem is as the policy is currently written, it sounds like there's nothing we can do about students having phones on campus. So when my kids were in middle school, you just simply would never have done the pulling out your phone in the middle of the day. But our policy says, students may use cell phones, smartwatches, pagers, and other mobile communication devices on campus during non-instructional time as long as it's utilized in accordance with law and any rules that individual school sites may impose. It, it's not, the, the phrasing of that makes it sound like it's not a big deal to have your phone on, phone on campus. As opposed to saying, we recognize that many students have cell phones, smartphones, pagers, and other mobile devices, but the district expects that these devices will not be visible during the school day. I mean, there's like a way of writing this that sets a very different message to parents and students.
Can we say, not visible, can we say that they've not come to school? Or is it just?
I think parents want their kids to have.
You can't say that. So you just say that they.
But can they be kept in their backpack?
Use, but not possession.
The why?
The current law refers to um authority to limit the use of cell phones, but, but not possession.
Right, so, but, but you could have it in your backpack.
Yeah.
Check it on your way to the bathroom if there's an emergency. But you, you just would not even conceive of pulling out your phone and handing it out during the day. Because, but this isn't worded that way. This sounds like it's fine, right?
Well, and administrative regulation is what picks that up and says, at middle school, they're not to use the phone except in the location that's designated on campus and not to have them out and use them for, so that's in their handbook. But it's, it could be, as I'm saying, there's an opportunity for the board to add some language that says a net clear expectation is that they will not be like, you know?
So Joan, this is, this reflects the law. The statement here reflects the law. So we can have a philosophical statement in addition to them?
Yeah, we can still reflect the law, but also infuse it with a stronger tone about our expectation that phones are not regularly out at school. I don't, I don't wanna tell parents they can't get their kids phones and smartwatches.
To have them in a backpack, I think about the safety part and parents saying, oh, I want my child to be able to contact me. There's a safety issue and then thinking of, like when we have the flyers here trying to get at that point twenty-eight second graders out and onto a plus. If everybody's stopping to get their cell phones out.
Their cell phones in their back pocket. They're not, they just shouldn't be seen. They shouldn't be pulled out. They shouldn't be walking around between classes.
I think they should be in a backpack.
Well, yeah, but I'm just, I'm recognizing that I do have personal beliefs about it, but I can't tell parents, you know? Parents have reasonable disagreements about this. I think we should have an agenda item where we get that more information and then we rewrite, revise this policy to reflect both law and a stronger assertion about the need to keep phones.
I agree with that, we bring it back.
So you want staff to work on language?
Yes.
Well, I, I like to see an analysis of phone use during instructional time. So where it is permitted and what would be examples of use cases.
So you're talking not high school for that?
Anywhere that, that it's permitted for instructional reasons. Because there could be certain, there are certain classes. I know I have a high school or, and a middle school where they use their phones for permitted purposes. So where are those? And then during non-instructional time, I really like an analysis of what does it look like at our middle school campus? Uh, you know, how many, how many phones are actually being confiscated? You know, rough order of magnitude? How many kids are in the cellphone zone? Are they adhering to that? You know, are kids sitting in there during their whole break and not socializing? Is it really just, I had a change of transportation for today and they're out of there? Like I need a little more information because it seems like that would be the biggest change that we could make. The cellphone zone goes away, phones aren't permitted, you know?
Yeah, there are also parents who are concerned um beginning in around fifth grade that during lunch break and on the bus in between classes, their kids are exposed to social media and YouTube that other kids have access to. And that's highly inappropriate. That's where parents complain about this. I don't know what we do about that, but I feel like, you know, we could make recommendations. I mean, we can't, people aren't gonna make decisions about how to parent it, but we can make recommendations about student behavior on buses, for example, or, you know? I, I don't know what to do with that, but I think it's worth thinking about. Because I, I don't feel like parents should be told, yeah, well, sorry, some kids have phone and they have YouTube and if your kid's sitting next to him on the bus, you're just gonna see that.
And that can be their kid's house that your kid goes over to.
But you can control that.
Well.
I'm just with transportation.
No, I'm not sure.
I know.
I'm not sure you can control that if your kid goes over to the kid's house. I mean, I don't know that you know what they're gonna see. And you can ask those questions if they have their guns locked up or their medicine locked up. But on the bus, then whatever we do, I think has to be balanced with what we, what enforcement takes.
Well, again, the, the board's philosophy is that, look, we don't want it on, because we have a rule. It's not supposed to be on the bus.
Right.
But what we get pushback on, which will end up on your, this is why I'm saying that you guys have to be on the same page, is that if you were, if we were to create a policy that says this is an expectation and then the regulation is, look, you do three violations of having a phone out, fifth grader, on the bus and you're, you're just having your phone out, you lose the privilege of riding the bus for a week. Right? So what happens with that is we'll get the parent who wants to call and they'll be upset that we took their ride away to ride the bus. And so they get really upset, they get frustrated, they get angry, right? So that's where it's like, well, no, we, you will all need to say, we support that policy.
That's great, you take your phone out, go on the bus.
We have bus behaviors before, Jason.
Yeah, we have, we actually have to.
That's not new.
No, it's not, but.
I have one that lost the privilege of those.
We've had a few that over years, but it's rare, right? But we could push that. So I, I think we have enough to kind of start.
I do feel like there needs to be something built into it. Like if you're a kid going home and you're gonna go to someone's house, maybe you sit in the front seat behind the bus driver to text your mom, like a designated area if you need to text a parent. Like I don't, I don't wanna make it impossible for parents to reach their kids only because we're at a point now with cell phones where the culture has changed and people.
The expectation is they can.
The expectation is you can reach your kid. And I don't want kids' cell phones out during the day at school, but I think we also have to meet parent needs on that and figure out how to build into the policy opportunities for that to happen so that, you know, people.
That's what I'd like to make, because I do believe, sorry, that remember the, the obvious school catastrophes with shootings and whatnot? Those, you hear these, the cell phones were lifelines for kids getting in touch with their parents. And so I don't know how we fit that into.
A lot of parents are very nervous about.
Into the equa, the equation. I also wanted to just say that I support all of the changes that are in green that the um CSBA has recommended. I think that the wording is much better and so I, 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 I think probably my head is of personnel issue four, four thousand.
We're not gonna get that.
It, it's in red. I, I just wanted to know whose wording was this that was, was in red. And one final thing is the new law that changed about gender as far as we cannot hold.
Right.
Yeah, is, is that included in all of these personnel policies that are not being updated?
And that, so just, that new law was not a new law, but a restatement of current law. So there's nothing, uh, nothing new that we seem to have to add as a result of that. It was, it was reaffirming what our, what already existed.
And the red language was like, you know, it was doing it, I figured that the track changes on, so I think I could change the color of the font to make it slightly. I wonder who did it.
Well, actually, yeah, you answered a question, anybody would notice, so good for you.
So concrete.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, well, I think we can, we'll take a step and we'll see what happens in the meantime. But I'll let the folks know that here today, we're gonna agendaize it separately in the September report meeting. Uh, and we'll, we'll do some more between now and then and kind of present it as maybe a more robust conversation about what we get. So, and then we can draft, you know, we can go with some general, those like ideas or whatever. Thank you.
I have one more.
Next one is just, uh, who's mainly the update there in program going around? Student cannot communicate recess based on, uh, you know, discipline, disciplinary unless they oppose a discipline, which is practice and policy, but like for a while, I just CSB has added it to their recommendation or requirement, sorry.
Yeah, that often times a kid that gets it taken away is the one that needs it most.
They, they need to be running, exactly.
Right, sorry. The next two.
So that's move forward for first reading.
Yeah.
The next two are what Jim was talking about, whether or not adjustment to some of the language related to discrimination. Um, you see the terminology sex-based discrimination in there. Um, and so it's updating some of the language to align with the current, uh, George Tannenite updates as well, so that much, but there's not really a change of, a new law that's changing that.
And same, John, fifty-one, forty-five point seven. It's just the wording, if I need to find out those groups.
Yeah.
Those were all in the second group that was sent out just because of title line.
Any other questions or?
I mean, five, one, four, six is ready to, again, mainly some, mainly preliminary updates around, um, the services and, um, in, any support services that are pregnant or have medical, related medical conditions, and so we'll see that version there, an update around lactation, um, and false frequency, termination of frequency, so there's some updated language in there, um, to align with, um, just current state of that goal.
And those tied to the Title Nine, some regulation changes as well.
We don't have it to that, I guess.
So I have all moving forward for first reading except mobile communication devices.
Correct, correct.
It works. Back to zero?
Back to zero, okay.
If I'm asking, I'm not telling you math.
No, it's fine.
We only moved up by that, so we don't have to go back to higher level.
So that's.
Reordering now.
BP zero, four, five, zero, comprehensive safety plan, device per CSBA.
Zero, four, one.
Oh, I don't, why don't I?
Okay, that was the, so.
On the second?
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
Non-discrimination.
Okay, I was looking at that, sorry, I was looking at that as a four.
Yeah.
It's not zero, four, thank you.
And BP zero, four, was your thing, tied to the change in Title Nine regulations, these are the updates I've recommended to the board, if possible.
Mark, can you just talk generally, what did, what change with Title Nine from a high level that's affecting all these policies, you know?
Well, I think depending on who you ask, uh, some would say it clarified the definition of sex and sex discrimination, others would say it expanded the definition of sex, but I would say it, it clarified the definition of sex discrimination in, in significant ways to align with what California law already is. And then it, um, on a high level, it stepped up and, and reinforced, uh, educational institutions' obligations to address, um, complaints and allegations of sex discrimination. And, uh, what was the third thing that I've asked before? It, um.
Some changes to the investigation processes.
Yeah, it, and that's what I mean by enhancing, um, and, oh, and it, uh, you'll see in, in going through all of these, you see a lot more references to Title Nine, uh, because it, it, um, kind of separated out or reinforced Title Nine as a separate obligation in the area of sex discrimination, um, from more general anti-discrimination laws regarding sex.
We now have a scandal on the Title Nine, uh, mandated training for all staff that didn't get it approved.
Okay.
Every year, you know, there's been more, all the more challenges today.
Yeah.
More and more challenges.
The other new training we have, the workplace, by the way.
All right, safety plan.
Safety plan's really just a general update on like the added comprehensive, basically there's nothing else.
I just have one question on the second page, second paragraph, um, it says need not be public disclosed, so does that, um, do we refuse public records request now? We had that issue that was from the guy.
Oh, and Mark answered the question.
That's from, what's his name, right?
Xiao, your favorite word.
Mr. Briscoe.
Yes, so, you know, that's, need not, to me, is not, is strong.
Well, the, the, the Public Records Act is permissive. The, the documents you can withhold, you're not necessarily required to withhold them, so I think that's why it says need not. You can disclose it even though you don't have to.
So with this wording change, we can still refuse?
Yeah.
Okay.
And actually, DSA, Department of Architecture, the, the end around used to be that they could just go, because they're a public entity and public records request them, uh, they are no longer going to fill those records requests for them, but that was the source, which was the problem, because, you know, they were willing to do that. Now they're not going to do that because there is an issue to give somebody equal unfettered access to plans to a public building. And there's some ingress and safety plan routes and all those different pieces, so yes, this is a good change.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we can still deny that.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this? So moving forward, first reading. Okay, twelve sixty.
Um, again, just the definition, when you think about foundations, um, it's a philosophical statement in the beginning, um, and that, you know, how we go about releasing that type of information is just a clarification. So we are to go through this process if a parent wants to be part of the directory or their information share, on the re-registration process, this is already part of what we do. We don't, just can't over the information to PTA for everybody unless the parent says that they're permissive of allowing it up in the same school.
Any questions on this or moving forward?
No, I thought it, it encapsulates the relationship with the foundation right now. I didn't, I shared it with the foundation director to see if they had any other suggestions to it, that sets our, our vision for how we work with them, I thought I described it after that.
Can you move next week up, uh, one, two, two, zero? Use facilities?
Probably, we have one, two, one, two, ten years. And this is a uniform complaint procedures, and again, all with the change in Title Nine regulations, it was completely against the line with, uh, with the regulations.
Well, I can read out the numbers, John.
No, no, I've got them right here, I just didn't.
Okay.
I read her, she just.
That's okay.
Going back and forth.
You don't want a paper, I'm just, it's right here. I didn't have any comments on that.
You guys have any comments of bringing forward the uniform complaint procedures? Now we're on the one line mentioned before, one, three, three, zero.
And this is the one we received one pool of.
Yeah, this is in relation to the high school pool required in majority board approval for holding a large event that would be outside of the CIF season, um, and that's how it's worded right now. If you wanted to enhance it, maybe we could include some intent language perhaps, or philosophical approach, but this is, that was good, there weren't many samples out there.
I thought, so based on, um, the member of the public, the neighbor, right, that's the neighbor, you got eight, three, seven, you got eight, three, and it's a need of basically there, but, um, perhaps Jeff consider any event that occurs outside the normal LBHS athletic schedule, because I think the point is that, you know, aside from hosting our own high schools, uh, games, you know, that those would come to the board for approval. So if the high school is involved in it, it's their CIF schedule, then they carry on. If the high school wants to plan a tournament that's outside a CIF, then that would come to the board for approval, basically, that's, that's, I think, what we're talking about, unless the board doesn't want to approve this.
So, so I'm just gonna.
That was one idea.
Throw out some thoughts about this. You know, this policy can't really be separated from this larger debate about the pool size, and I don't want to take away the power of the board to make reasonable decisions about when it's appropriate to use the pool for various needs, but I, I also think it's somewhat compelling in a context where we're significantly increasing the size of the pool to find a way, and I don't know how to do that, to build in some sort of responsiveness to community concerns. I mean, I, if I was a community member, I would be worried that if you had the right group of board members, you know, you could, for a fee, host things and everybody would just, you could get three out of five people to do it.
That's the dilemma, when we, back when we had FFRP, I mean, you cannot put something in place in perpetuity with a, a, an institution that functions with ever-changing people. I mean, that's, that's why we made that as a super majority, which was a four-fifth vote, to change that.
I mean, I just, I don't know what the answer is, but as it's written, I, I, I would like to think of a way to be responsive to community concerns, like, is there a process where for a large meet, we could consider the number of people that we're gonna be, I mean, I, I don't know what the answer is, I'm like brainstorming, could we consider, is it, you know, how out of the norm is it in terms of size, what times a day will it be?
See, I think we were basically saying we wouldn't do that.
I saw one of the big issues is parking, like, if we have some huge swim meet, their issue is, where is everybody?
Right, I mean, we did say we weren't, we were not gonna build a bigger pool that was gonna result in having a bunch of meets, but because it's not written into policy, instead, like, ten years down the line, we could have a whole new board, and they could say, well, you built a pool and we just need a majority to vote that we're gonna have a big meet here.
I think this is already pretty restrictive, if, if every basketball team that wanted to host their invitational has to come to the board for approval.
We didn't require them to come to the board for approval to host their tournament, they just.
Yeah, it's like, this is, I feel like this is already, any, and, and what I'm saying before, how you wrote, it was like any CIF thing, so it could be maybe within CIF that somebody else's CIF season, meaning, you know, their pool is out of, out of commission, they wanna come use ours, now we're saying this is just our high school CIF games and everything else has to come to the board. I think that's pretty restrictive. I think we're giving the board a lot of control over, yes, can afford change, but this is, we wouldn't do this for any other sport, of which high school football destroys the town.
We don't care for the track invitational.
Track invitational, no, you know, basketball, volleyball, they can all hold sports to raise funds for their programs, they don't have to get on the board calendar X number of weeks before to get approval, like, I think this is a, I think this is kind of restrictive already. And we reduce the size of the pool, we can't even host anything a lot the size anymore because we.
You know, I, I don't have any answers or recommendations, I just am trying to be responsive to the public comment and think about what it means to have a larger pool, and are we doing everything that we need to do given a larger pool?
But he wants to, I think the, the clarification is, he wants to lock in that future boards aren't gonna be able to change things, and that's again, that, you can't do that.
We can't do it, we can't do that, but I think a majority for anything outside of our own high school season and CIF season too, because they, Jeff, like, correct me if I'm wrong, right here, preseason's not CIF, postseason's not CIF, so this is a fairly short window of time of which our own team would be able to use this pool.
And they limit number of competitions.
And then everything else has to come to the board, but that's, that's gonna limit what they can.
It's really important to note, too, there is a max, maximum occupancy load of the pool, this is not increasing, in fact, based on the deck size, it might actually be decreasing a little bit, and it is still far less than the theater and the stadium. So when you talk about parking issues, it's not gonna happen even at full capacity of that pool, it's gonna be far less than a popular show or football game.
Yeah, but a popular show, everybody comes and sees this show at one time. If it's a, um, an event with many teams.
Like an invitational?
Yeah, then you've got a bunch, whatever that capacity is, and then the next hour, another bunch, and the next hour, another bunch.
Yeah, that's what they, like the try, like the try.
There's a, there's a.
But that's, that's once a year.
Yeah, we already, just to be clear, we already host a tournament in there, we host a JV tournament where we have four teams that are all there at the same time, and so that hasn't been an issue, no one has ever said word to us when they host that tournament, because number one, the water polo numbers of players is not a significant number of kids. On a water polo team, there's maybe fourteen, twelve to fourteen kids.
The number of spectators is not robust.
And so it's, and so I think to Jeff's point, the, the capacity is the capacity, no matter whether it's capacity of two hundred and eighty people over the course from seven AM to seven PM, we can only put so many people on there, and that's the capacity, period. But I, I think we cannot place a limitation that is, locks the board in the future people around the, the use of facility, you can't, it's legal for you to do that. What we're doing is saying that if there's gonna be something that's big, the board has to make a decision, because the community may change and say, we're super supportive of that, they may sponsor something like that, but the board needs to weigh in on that, but we're carving out something that we're not asking for anybody else to do, we don't carve it out for theater usage, we don't carve it out for anything else, so this in and of itself is a huge gift. Now, what's not included in here is if we were to, um, if the city wants to have time, because the city has one to continue to want to use the pool, if the city wants to use the pool for something, how does the board wanna handle that?
Or anybody else that wants to pull a, a board, what is it called? A facility.
A joint use, so is it?
Yes, like you said, if a school doesn't have their, their pools being redone and they want.
Well, what those youth, there are some wishes to be.
Because of the Civic Center Act, so there's like, there's also this obligation that you use taxpayer dollars to build a facility, and then because of Civic Center Act, according to that priority zone, if you don't have something else going on that day, then how do you say no, or like just completely close off your facility? Like, do you refer to your policy and say, oh, well, we have this, this policy that says actually, you know, sorry, community, but, you know, you're, we can't, I mean, I, I kinda agree that aside from the super majority, which I think a regular majority is fine, including LBHS as a participant, this was Gary Kasich's comment, I think could be, it could be strengthened, and then I think we've already restricted it quite a bit.
I mean, what I find most compelling is that the size of the pool is increasing, but the duck is prohibiting large numbers of people, I, I mean, it seems like with a bigger pool, you would have many more people there, but what I'm hearing you say is that that won't be the case because the duck would be so much smaller.
Can I ask if we, if we added, I wouldn't like to add a word if it's acceptable, any proposed event that occurs outside the normal LBUSD athletic schedule, is that what you wanted to add, Joe, the, before the athletic schedule? LBUSD?
I had to just.
LBHS, the normal LBHS athletic schedule, meaning our. I put LBHS in. So you wanna add any proposed?
Any proposed event, because we want, it's, if we, they wanna do it before being planned or taken place, I mean, if they're proposing it, they would have to come to the board.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not an event that occurs, it's a proposed event.
And then if we're not using it, we can say, sure.
Well, to me, we committed to, when, I think all, all this started when we had speakers who said, this would be great for the city, because people will flock here and they'll stay in the hotels and they eat the restaurants, and it really alarmed people that we were going to continually have these kind of events in the pool that would impact their, their neighborhood, of course, but that, they didn't want that, I mean, the speakers that were speaking to us thought it was a selling point to us, to have a bigger pool, or to have, at that time, two pools, so that it, it just, even though there is.
I need to find an event, I, I, you know, what's an event, is, if, what if the youth water polo team wants to have a match, are you guys gonna?
Well, they have events, they have the, like, alumni games, right, alumni and.
Yeah, I'm gonna say youth water polo right now, I mean, if they host, I mean, they play clubs, so they have a club event, is that, that's through joint, that's through a facility's use, is that coming to you all for approval?
Do they have to get that approved now?
They just get a facility's use request, but right now, more often than not, we're probably using city time, so we're not involved.
Yeah, it seems like you could have a policy about the number of people who are expected or if it reaches a cert, I mean, I'm trying to think.
That's what I'm trying.
We don't wanna set, you're like, we don't wanna have to approve every single thing that the pool is used for, but we do wanna protect the community.
Could we maybe just add, I think we only should be approving LBHS events, so if it's a community use event, that's a joint use thing, that's a, I think in our policy, concerning ourselves with our teams requesting invitationals outside of their CIF schedules, what our policy should include, I think we could add a, some language that, you know, we are responsive to the impact events have on the surrounding neighborhood, I guess we don't care about football, because everybody loves football, but, you know, or these neighbors don't live by the football stadium, but the, the city request and the facility, I mean, we don't know what's gonna become of that, we don't know.
We host the soccer tournament in town, you know, and we give our fields, they use the city fields, our fields, you guys are not a part of that, it's just, they request the fields, it impacts the city because of parking and all those different pieces, but I wanna make sure that we write the policy so it's very clear to folks that we're, if there's a joint use, or there's a facility's use, or a joint use, say the city wants to use it for something, that's, we're not gonna, you're not gonna have to approve that, just like school stuff.
Yeah, I think we, I think we take a first stab at it by trying to be reasonable and responsive to community concerns, which is within the high school team's calendar, and if they are, are wanting to compete outside of CIF season, that we approve it and we start there.
It's high school specifically.
Any proposed district event?
Yes, I think you need to put.
Any proposed district event?
Or district, yeah, district.
Because that's really what we have authority over.
Right.
Right? Do we have authority over un-facility, shared facility use? We can turn something down.
Well, if we go back through a joint use process and the city has access to the pool on Saturdays from ten to mapping.
Then we don't cover that.
We don't have that.
We haven't renegotiated a joint use, we're a little ahead of course on that, but we need to, the policy's on, on the table, we've been promising that modification to the policy, and I think this is a good start, saying our intent is that we can, our team can play in their own pool for CIF season, and anything beyond that, any other district aquatic event is gonna come to the board for majority approval.
So we'll bring it, list forward this first reading, and that's part of the input from that.
If we negotiate a joint use agreement, then maybe we should, could put language in there.
If we do, so we don't wanna put that in there now.
Yeah, but the joint use could have language in there.
That's what I mean, we should think about that with the joint use agreement. That's what I mean, we should think about that with the joint use agreement.
District events, not outside groups.
Yeah, but it's built into school facilities and grounds, so applies to outside use of groups.
Just thinking through like if the middle school holds an event there.
That's why you use district events.
Yeah, we change it to district.
District events. Because we really don't, we don't have good clarity from this city yet, whether they will rent space from us while made under Civic Center Act. Or whether we will enter into a new joint use agreement where we could have other things written into that, our custom to the. The, you know, the neighborhood concerns, we're not there yet. We're waiting for their, we're waiting for them.
And there's venues, should that happen, there's venues for, the city comes in and says, we're going to use it and we're going to host a big tournament. Like there's venues for the community to go to the city and say, we don't want that, right? It's their choice. They're deciding to do it and then they can all go to them and say, this is, we don't want this activity. Or there's venues for them to provide the feedback and say, this is not okay.
What are, Jeff, what are the reasons right now that we can, when somebody does kind of request our facilities, what can we legally turn them down for? Do we just get, can kind of say like, eh, we don't want the wear and tear, sorry, pool's not permitted, right?
It's flimsy. All, all of the litigation I know of has been religious groups who've been denied access, um, on church and state grounds. Then there's, uh, a couple of US Supreme Court decisions on that. The Civic Center Act has a provision in it. Let's see if I can find it, that's generally stated. Yeah, management direction and control of school facilities under this article vested in the governing board of the district. Or promulgate rules and regulations necessary, which is what this policy is. And one of them is preservation of order in school facilities and on school down grounds and protection of school facilities and school grounds. Including if governing board needs necessary appointment of a person who shall have charge of school facilities and grounds for purposes of their preservation and protection. And then there's a provision about interference with their conduct of regular, the regular conduct of schoolwork. So.
It's really just keeping your grounds orderly and.
My opinion, as long as it's consistently applied, that this use of that facility is going to create traffic issues, it's going to create noise issues that other events don't. It would, it would be in the, the district's authority to draw that line. But you have to be careful about being consistent with whatever lines you draw.
Yeah, like you couldn't say like, well, with, you know, the ball and track and all those, they can blow up the neighborhood. But now we have it written in our policy that aquatic events can't cause unnecessary impact on the neighborhood. It just seems a little.
Very hard to.
But that's a, all this is doing, as I read it, is saying that certain uses of the pool come to the board. And those kinds of things can, uh, be addressed and analyzed in terms of whether the recommendation is to approve it or deny it. Or how it differs from those things. It's not saying they can't, we're drawing a line and, and, you know, never use the pool, uh, for anything except A, B, and C. It just, Civic Center Act says the board approves use. Most of the time, that's always done by staff through the facility, um, use process. All of this is saying is that for this one particular circumstance, it's going to come to the board.
Would it be wise then or unwise to include something that the impact on the surrounding neighborhood would be considered by the board? Well, that's what they're looking for, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah.
And future boards, when they read the policy, say, oh, we're supposed to analyze this for impact around the neighborhood.
I think it's really complicated because impact relative to what?
That's subjective.
Relative, exactly, relative to a football game, relative to the all-day invitational, relative to once a year versus ten times a year. I mean, it gets really complicated.
I know, it's like, like, do we even?
Well, I think you could draw a line with school-sponsored activities. This is a, it's going to be a high school football game. That's not a facility use, that's not a Civic Center Act use, that's a school-sponsored activity. Um, so I think you could draw that line.
Oh, okay, and make a case that you were declining something.
Yeah.
But would it be wise to have that in this paragraph?
You Jim Hackett, there's a football game, but, um, you know, we're not going to.
Like, would it be wise?
That's not a, that's not a circumstance where the traffic is caused by Civic Center Act use. It's being caused by a school activity.
And we've had those issues come up with football with noise, lights, I mean, you know, that's, the lights are better now than they used to be as far as going into the neighborhood. But it's for the, for the broader sense, it's, it's accepted, and I'm asking acceptance standard of football games. The other, I think a lot of the countries that we host, I think people probably aren't even aware of them, other than the trophy meeting, which we send out information and they know what's going on and.
What if we had a sentence that said something like non-district uses will be evaluated, those non-district uses will be evaluated on their impact of the surrounding community?
I'm not sure we want to go there.
Well, that's just floating out there.
I think what's tricky is we're doing this in a vacuum. We don't have a pool yet. We don't know what kinds of requests are going to come in. We don't know how it's going to impact the neighborhood.
We don't know what the city's going to.
We don't know whether the city's going to have a use agreement, but we do have a set of people who are cognizant of community concerns and want to be aware of that going forward. So I, I don't know how to do it, but I think we have to, as the pool gets planned and, I mean, we have to be mindful of being responsive to this in the future.
We just got there, but as far as what we may limit to, this paragraph addresses that.
Right.
It's a good first step.
I think it's a good, it's a good first step.
If we bring it back to the first reading, then we can, we'll be receiving more input, so we'll see how it goes over.
Okay, yeah, and let's keep that concept in mind, like, that maybe non-district events are evaluated by the board, but there could be a positive impact. Like, oh, that'd be great to have all these.
Right.
Kids in the pool or whatever, you know, whatever the.
Yeah, I just want to be mindful of community concerns moving forward, and I don't know how to do that because we don't yet have a pool. So I think we should just keep that in the back of our mind, and we're setting up a higher bar than other events have to use. And it sounds like we can't fit as many people there anywhere.
Other events have generally fallen into the, you live near a high school, what did you expect?
Bubbles.
I mean, whenever we did the baseball field, we had people come, we had a meeting out of the baseball field and they had, they wanted us to eliminate all sports.
Yeah.
They didn't see any reason they didn't want anything out there because it was bothering them.
Wait, but the community may find in five years, it's not as difficult as we thought it would be.
True.
Or they may say, this is exactly what we predicted, you need a new policy on this.
I just want to know where we're going to go now. We have about eight minutes left.
Twenty-one, twenty-one is easy because it's law.
Anything that's easy. When you said twenty.
Twenty-one, twenty-one superintendent's law, this was based off of the.
A lot of what happened in Orange.
We said a couple of superintendents.
Yeah, I didn't have any issues. We all saw this and heard this coming, like, tracking our neighbors.
Right, so we knew that. I, well, I knew that CSBA would take a strong position on this.
So first reading on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Issues, please.
Right, fourth.
Thirty-five, sixteen should be easy, even though it's long.
Right, because it's just, it's, gives us a lot more detail.
I was fine with this. Thirty-five, fifty? Jeff, anything on nutrition?
No.
Nutrition.
So really, it's just being a little more clear on the meals being offered than before, just as a providing. So implied that you're going to make a meal for every single student, but you should just offer it and if they take it. And then there is language in both of the nutrition updates regarding, um, it used to just say unprocessed foods and it's getting a little more explicit. Freshly prepared on site, sustainably, locally, uh.
Right.
Minimally, minimally processed, locally grown. So it's being a little more explicit in like the scratch cooking model that we moved towards.
Yeah.
And the free and reduced meals.
Same, same changes, just reinforcing that it's, uh, they're made available, one free breakfast for our food lives.
Jeff, any solid language or CSBA language? I don't know, live around fresh fruits, semi-processed, sustainable.
It was CSBA, it was, yeah.
We only have five and six.
Maybe they didn't have sustainable, or I might have added a, a one or two words.
Two, four, six, and nine. No, we did five for the cell.
Oh, we did five.
So Mike says fours are easy. Mike?
Mike, you always have so many, Mike.
Title nine.
Title nine.
Let me ask the lawyers.
I literally, I think I had four and then, and title nine changed.
Forty, thirty, right? Forty, thirty, you have a title nine.
Yeah, so forty, thirty is, is due to, he changes title nine. As well as a little bit of the cannabis law, like that got popped in the paragraph, you know, probably a day. And then addicted to the legal updates. That's, that's four, zero, three, zero. Four, zero, three, three is going to be a relative, like they had the pregnancy piece of the occupation. Forty, forty-one, eleven. Again, it recommends changes for CSBA, it's about how to recruit and select candidates, but very minor changes there.
Yeah.
Uh, four, one, one, two point nine, four, two, twelve point nine, four, three, twelve point nine, it really is just legal updates. The legal updates are not on your national policy itself.
They are.
Yeah, there's no policy change.
No. Forty-one, eighteen, again, there was some wordsmithing as well as some, some changes to, uh, in law in relation to how you're able to discipline and dismiss. Staff and their ability to have compulsory leave of absence, so that's the only change in, in forty-one, eighteen. Forty, forty-one, nineteen point eleven, and it's up to four, two, and four, three, again, these are all reflecting the timeline changes.
And note the change of the name on that one. It was sexual harassment, now it's sexual discrimination and sex-based harassment.
So that's forty-one, eighteen, so forty, forty-one, twenty-one. Um, this just captures that law change with increasing sick leave for staff as well as some, some minor wordsmithing, getting rid of the she, the employee. So legal updates that will overdue. Forty-one, twenty-seven, again, just some wordsmithing, some legal updates on the second page.
So these were the updates in the last one, they're all, that's all additions?
Yeah, it just wasn't, it wasn't there, so clearly, hadn't been touched in a while, so it's just. Catching up on all additions. Okay, so forty-one, twenty-seven, again, it's just some minor wordsmithing, some legal updates, court decisions in the backside, they weren't there previously. Now moving into forty-one, forty, again, this is similar, it's, uh, just some, some wordsmithing and some, uh, and some legal updates. In relation to district communication to employees, um, as well as going back and how you, how you handle unions accessing, um. orientation, so it's, they, it's been touched recently, but they went back and they, they continued to revise it.
CSB must have a position called wordsmithing.
I don't think this, a different person gets their hands on this, it's much better way to say it.
Yeah, I like this one, because it's my way.
And then with employee safety, forty-one, fifty-seven, it was a complete revision, much more specific.
We took that one out.
Oh, that's right.
Forty-one, twenty-one.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, sixty-one.
Forty-one, sixty-one. Um, this was just some legal update changes to, uh, it added the maternity, the reductive laws of the even earlyment. So just the changes to forty-one, sixty-one. And around forty-two, eighteen, it's again with some of the laws changing in relation to disciplining actual employees, no mire. And then it adds that compulsory leave of absence to the end, like it wasn't a similar concept. Maybe we have forty-one, eighteen. It's separate because it's.
Forty-one, eighteen is certificate.
And this is a lawsuit. And that is it, and it's the four, two, five.
We're still having sixes and the nines if you want to do that.
Yeah.
We have two minutes. So at least just, uh, minor changes, right?
Two.
Six, six, four, five.
Six, one, one, five is very small, besides this, it's a kind of, uh, kind of trip experience, so it's our, our role in celebrating our campus, uh, in school. And then the, kind of, if you jump to six, one, six, four first, that's one of the lower.
It's out of order.
It is out of order.
Six, one, six, four.
This, well, six, one, six, four, it's some, again, it's a very small things related to just curriculums and adding, spending that and. Uh, clarifications because of just mental health, current practice, so that later on, that we already do. It's six, one, six, three, and that has a, um, a piece around AI and our control.
This is a bigger.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a big one.
I feel, this is another part of the whole larger technology, um, goals for this year.
So when we look at the information Jason, on all the technology things that were asked for as far as implementation and current practices, we wouldn't need that. And before we would tackle this, right?
We wouldn't, why?
We would need more information about what's, what's going, what's currently done.
Yeah, I also think we're writing this, I, I mean, it's all so new and there's this new research that's coming out. That says that we should be requiring the use of AI because there are kids who come to school that have been exposed to it and understand how to use it. And have a strong ethical basis for how, how it can be used. And then there are kids who come to college and have no idea how to take advantage and use it. I mean, I just think there's all these new things and new research, so.
So you want to delay this?
I think we should.
Recommendation, what information would you need before we bring this to first read? You want to think about it?
I mean, I think that, that's the intent of what we put in there actually, was that, one, we, we created some guidelines because you need to have a closed system. We have some pieces there, and we need to remind people that purpose required. We don't have anything right now that kind of covers, I mean. Loosely, I tie it technology-wise, um, in terms of using our current tech, um, expectations. But what it does do is, um, I mean, the, the statement that we recognize the use of AI. When used appropriately, enhance the student learning by improving efficiencies in education, right, new creative ways to support learning, et cetera, et cetera. So we took the policy, there's some other districts that are taking a really like prohibited list to the board. Like, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do this. We, we talked, to your point, like, we don't want to take something like that to, to create this. That's the law, really philosophy around expectations for use. We thought it was important in light of, um, uh, if you look at the prohibitions, that's really what we're feeling like we needed a little bit more kind of.
Yeah, I.
Teeth to, which is the, you know, inappropriate, because this is what, this is what we're seeing a lot of. Is, uh, the, um, creating inappropriate and, and or sharing inappropriate kind of images of people around. So we do, we have a way to address that within our current policies, but, uh, one of the ideas was to kind of bring it forward here, so I don't.
I, I actually thought all this wording was good. My, the, what gave me pause was that the bigger issue for me is this, um, issue around professional development, around the use of AI. So I, I'm a, I'm the, I'm the AI committee at work. And one of the issues is, is like, okay, we know that it's better to incorporate it into the classroom instead of prohibiting it. But then how do you teach people how to do it? And how do you teach students when it's okay to do it? It's, it's, it's easy to like write a quick policy that say we recognize it's good. But then like, what are the pedagogical ways that you integrate AI? That simultaneously uses it in healthy ways and also touches the ethics of it. And it always should be tied to learning objectives. So if the learning objective is to write in a similar information, then any use of AI completely undermines that. But you can't write that into a policy. So I guess my point is we need to be thinking in a bigger way about what to do with it.
Yeah, to your point, because that wouldn't necessarily be included in the board policy, but what I, what I can tell you is that that is what we are doing, that is what we have been doing is like. In the last twelve months and a few years, what level do we have to use the staff? What level of purpose looking through like, what are the ways that students would like interact with the, with students, or staff interact with students? And really, that's a lot of all like the transparency of the use, right? But that's not the note that sort of live in, live in a policy.
I don't think it belongs in the board policy. I do think that a fundamental issue is what is the learning objective for every assignment? And how does AI enhance, undermine, or just generally about it? And are teachers able to make that, you know, kind of evaluation? Because it's, uh, it's hard to do.
Right.
Even, even people who know about AI find it really, um, kind of a daunting task, so.
I think you could add that to the policy, John.
But this is a six thousand, so just to be careful, like, this is for student use of technology, so it's not calling out like, we're using it for staff and staff expectations around AI. I pulled it out of, they had some things in there for staff that don't belong in a six thousand, because six thousand. Even more belongs in four thousands around staff expectations around the use, which I think that has been slower to come. There's been a reaction because we want to create some parameters for the kids' usage. Because, but to your point, the unknown around staff and how they're using it still needs to be somewhat kind of processed. So don't see this as like, this is the only place AI will live. This is the AI specific to the students using it, and it's really guidelines for them. More than anything else. We did throw a couple of little things in there so that for protections of the students, a kind of expectation, because that's really what it is. Like, the closed system, that's an expectation, right? We have to have a closed system. And what I mean by closed is that when students use, if we ever give them access to ChatGPT, which we had some students we gave access to. We have to have a closed system, and what I mean by closed is that, when students use, if we ever give them access to chat GPT, which we had some students we gave access to. It's a closed system in that their, their questions and things don't go out into the broader world. It stays within a closed, so that the AI machine isn't using their questions and their things to generate additional, kind of. It's not going out into the broader pool of information, it's been closed and it's housed solely within our system, right? So, that's the, the definition, that, like, that closed system. Um, so, again, I'm happy to, to push this, uh, but the other part is, I think, we need some guidelines. That we'd like to be able to sink some teeth into, specific to the prohibition piece, because we want, we wanna be really clear that from the board level, that this is not a okay use of AI.
What if we added just a very simple thing that says, any use of AI that undermines the learning objectives of a course or assignment? You know what I mean, like, student, right now, it's like, if the teacher didn't tell you, you couldn't use it, it's okay to use. But something more general that says if you're using AI in a way that undermines the expectations for what you will learn. In the assignment or in the course, then that's an inappropriate use of AI.
So, I'd say let's add that to fifty-one thirty-one nine, which is academic honesty.
That would be great.
So, I think that's appropriate place for it to live, we can build out some academic honesty, kind of expectations. Um, because I think that, then, it makes it live where it should live.
Good.
So, if we can bring back something to the board around that chat, that has some specifics. Um, we've been talking about how you write that, that one's been one of the, kind of one of the most statements, like, how do we? Because, now, we wanna be, having kids use it for the right reasons, but to your point, like, if it's clearly said, you're not supposed to use this, and you do, that's an ethics violation. Which is an academic honesty violation, so we can, we can add it there.
Yeah, but also on this paragraph that, John, that one, it says, we're gonna reach in principle, this is the definition, is the use of AI can enhance student learning? If you wanted to add a sentence that talks about the goals, like, you know, that we have the, you know, new and creative ways to support learning, encourages independent research, curiosity, critical thinking, problem solving, like. There was another sentence you wanted there about AI and how it's enhancing the student learner experience. Right, you could add it there too, like that, I think.
Right.
It's very clear that the goal of it is to support learning, that there's a natural reason right there, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, there's some, we could tweak that a little bit, to kind of try to tease that out a little bit, where it calls, that calls out like the intentionality of it.
And we can bring the academic honesty forward too, and blend it too, so that there's clarity around the appropriate use from an academic honesty perspective. And then just a general student appropriate use from a technological perspective, specific to, because. Again, academic honesty doesn't address the AI issues related to inappropriate use of, like, teaching and sharing, and. That's where, that lives in here, that's what we're trying to get, like, line out, but you can see there's, there's pieces of this that belong in other policies. It's just hard to kind of, like, full, understandable context when we pull it apart and put it there, but we should probably do that, and then.
Yeah.
And also, I keep. Coming back more than once.
Yeah.
In the next year.
And I keep repeating myself, so I apologize, but I really would like to get a culture around AI for both students and faculty, that's like, what are the learning objectives? And how does AI relate to it in every dimension, because when students understand that, like, if you're using AI to write a paper in English. That's most definitely undermining the learning objective, unless it's just checking your grammar, or, you know what I mean, like, how do we? How do students and faculty understand what the objective of the assignment is, and in which way AI is appropriate to achieve it? And in which way AI would undermine achieving the objective, so I don't know what to do with that, but I'll just throw it out there.
We're gonna bring it back and keep iterating around that.
Yeah, but I think it's a great start.
Three more, four more.
And they're all legal issues, right? So, is there any objection to bringing those in the nine thousands back for first read?
Did we, did you guys sell some six one six four dot two, Jeff? Guys?
We did.
We did that.
Yeah. You jumped in that before.
The nines?
Yeah, there's. They're all, I think.
I mean, the first one seems pretty straightforward.
These are straight UCSBA.
They are, they're just.
So, I have no problem with that.
It's based on the law, right?
That's just clarification, yeah, word smithing.
Yeah, I thought these were very.
So, we can bring these back as a first read?
Yeah, I had not found any of these.
Okay.
Now, that's fine, the question for me, if we, am I trying to get these on the August fifteenth agenda, as first read or September?
Let's do September, because I'm not gonna turn.
I could, but we're online.
We have two, well, we got two, we got leadership tomorrow, and Brian, and you can share with me, we're gonna get it. And the most changes, so we get, it's fine.
And if there's an eight, two.
The only ones that I want to share about, like, the title nine ones, I mean. We're working as quickly as possible, so, it is what it is, like, we're making adjustments, the law exists. I mean, if I got it done.
Still groups out there trying to get nationwide injunctions.
Right.
Yeah, okay, that works good.
So, you need to have motion to a journalist, please, some second, all in favor of, I, I oppose, Gary's five, four oh one.